Five regular meeting of the town board to order. Um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Present.
Councilmember Delarada.
Here.
Councilmember McPartland.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Here. I'm gonna ask everyone to please rise and ask that our former chair of the planning board lead us in the pleasure of leading.
..............................
All right. Uh, we have a lot of minutes here. We're gonna roll through the minutes and then we're gonna go a little bit out of order. We have um, some special things this evening, so I wanna make sure we fit everything in before it gets too late. Uh, we will start with a motion for the October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
Motion for the October twenty-second regular meeting minutes.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll take a motion for the November sixth, twenty-twenty-four special meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from the November sixth, twenty-twenty-four special meeting.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We'll move on to the November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from the November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll move on to a motion for the December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, and finally, the January twenty, January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five organizational meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five organizational meeting minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. So, we are going to start actually with a ceremonial resolution for Market Thirty-Two. Um, we're gonna take some time to uh, for a presentation and then some photographs afterward, and then we'll move on to a presentation on the national resources inventory. So, we can come on up? Do you wanna go through it? Could you read the resolution?
Yes. A resolution...
Okay, go ahead.
Oh. A resolution recognizing Market Thirty-Two's outstanding beautification and landscaping efforts at its Knott Street East store in the town center of the town of Niskuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The motion passes and we'll move on to a short ceremony? Joe, do you, can you grab the mic and give it to John? Oh, no, never mind. He'll do it up here.
All right. Well, thank you. Yes, that's from the town.
Thank you, thank you.
That's a nice card and, and a gift, and we do appreciate it. It looks wonderful. Uh, that, of course, is a very main space to our town center. Uh, so we appreciate your efforts, and as part of that, we've dedicated a ceremonial resolution, um, whereas... I need some glasses. Market Thirty-Two received site plan approval by the Town of Niskuna Planning Board for a tenant change to occupy a vacant commercial space that was formerly ShopRite on January twenty-second of twenty-twenty-four. They inherited a plaza with many trees that were dead, in decline, unhealthy, and rather unsightly. Um, it was a concern to many local residents because it's so prominently displayed within our town. During the spring of twenty-twenty-four, Market Thirty-Two met with Niskuna Tree Council to review existing vegetation and come up with new landscaping design that would improve the aesthetics of the town center. It provided shade and valuable green space, as well as improved the quality of the landscape habitat for pollinators and native species. And it's really done a great job from taking what fortunately seemed to be becoming a thing of a past, big vast uh, parking spots and asphalt with no trees, no landscaping islands and the like. Um, so this is a, this is a wonderful addition. Their leadership in transforming and maintaining this critical section of the town center is recognized and commended, and these values improvements add to the town center should not be underestimated. Thank you again, from the town.
Thank you.
Town board and the supervisor. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so um, I just wanted to say that I actually worked with Josh and the Market Thirty-Two taking over the plaza. He was wonderful to work with. This is your Niskuna Tree Council? They actually met with Josh multiple times and went over species, like they were concerned that maybe if they planted a tree, the branches would interfere with the vehicles, so we did some columnar species over there, and they were just wonderful to work with, and it's a major improvement. So, um, it was actually the Tree Council's idea to thank you guys, and um, we really appreciate everything that you did.
Very much. They did all the work. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the presentation on a natural resources inventory. I'd like to introduce Ashok Ramasubramanian, uh, who has worked very hard on this uh, on this project, so thank you for presenting on tonight.
Good evening, town board members. Good evening, town employees. Good evening, residents and police officers. My name is Ashok Ramasubramanian. I'm a member of the Conservation Advisory Council of Niskuna. And uh, I was the project lead on this natural resources inventory project, and thank you so much for giving me the time to speak about this. So, why is land conservation important? Uh, spending time in nature, that is to say, in the woods, it's not just important, it is necessary for human health and well-being. The photographs are from the nature walk that we did with a trained and professional ecologist, and I'll talk more about that. And when we say spending time in nature is necessary for human health and well-being means that your health and well-being are going to be adversely affected if you don't spend time in nature on a regular basis. And that's not just our opinion, it's hard science. So, these are some papers from literature. I'm, I'm a scientist. I like to look at the literature before coming to conclusions. So, spending at least one-twenty minutes in uh, a week in nature is associated with good health and well-being. And major news outlets are starting to take notice. This is an article in the Wall Street Journal, uh, again saying that uh, spending time in nature is good for you. And next is an article in the New York Times, "Nature Deficit Disorder Is Really A Thing, And It Particularly Affects Children." Of particular interest here is underserved communities and underrepresented minorities. If you look at the last bar of the graph there, seventy-six percent of low-income and non-white people, um, they are more likely to experience nature deprivation, so there is um, some special attention to be paid to underrepresented minorities as well. So, what do the residents of Niskuna want? So, in addition to the Comprehensive Planning Committee, I also serve on the, no, in addition to the Conservation Advisory Council, I also serve on the Comprehensive Planning Committee, and this is from a survey done by the Comprehensive Planning Committee. This is question twenty-one. The text in italics is the question, it's an open-ended question asked to residents, "What would you like to see enhanced or protected in the town of Niskuna over the next ten years?" And the thing on the right is what's called a word cloud. We, we take all the text and then try to figure out uh, prominent themes in the text. So, you, you can see that the number-one prominent theme, as represented by the residents taking the survey, is green space, and that, and the table at the bottom says like how much each word was represented in question twenty-one answers. So, the town of, uh, the residents of Niskuna really are interested in green space as well, and you know, that's not surprising because both in the Conservation Advisory Council and the planning board, and then town board in general, you know, people standing on this part, that is something that they often say, you know, green space should be preserved. We are concerned that green space is getting lost and so on. I'm sure it's not, no surprise to anyone. So, what is a natural resources inventory? The simple survey of existing natural resources. You go out and find out what's there, like, you know, before we talk about conservation, we need to know what we got. So, that's simply the purpose of the natural resources inventory. Cultural resources are also uh, included. The NRI is a tool at the state level that the state government encourages municipalities like Niskuna to go through the process of developing an NRI. It is, this slide is important. The NRI is not an enemy of development, is not an enemy of economic growth. It, it allows for smart growth. The process brings communities together. The public, especially children, are exposed to nature. Wildlife corridors are noted, and actually helps developers but I, by identifying wetlands, protected species, and other items that are important in the secret review that we routinely de, routinely do at the planning board level and at the Conservation Advisory Council level. So, the, the, what are the features of the Niskuna NRI, like what makes us distinct? So, uh, probably the most important point is um, is number three. So, in communities typically, when they do an NRI, a firm is hired, the firm sends people out into the field, the firm makes a report, and the report sits somewhere, infrequently not read, uh, by a lot of people. So, in Niskuna, we took the approach that we really wanna get the community involved. So, this is from a spring twenty-twenty-four nature walk. You can see town planner Laura Robertson there, and she was integral in the, in, in developing this NRI, and, and the whole planning department has been extremely helpful. And the fourth bullet point is also important. It's, it was act, the whole thing was done with little cost to the town. Uh, the phase one was done with a two-thousand-dollar grant from the Niskuna Community Foundation, and phase two, which uh, I wrote up with a lot of help from Laura and the planning department, we got a fifteen-thousand-dollar grant from the DEC with a town match of fifteen-hundred dollars. So, the, we got a lot of ban for the fifteen-hundred-dollar uh, of, of town funds. So, phase one, uh, we, we are doing the Niskuna NRI in multiple phases. We just completed phase two, so this is again unique to us. Many municipalities will just do a massive, like a hundred-thousand-dollar project with a professional engineering surveying firm as a formal report that really doesn't accomplish much. So, in the Niskuna method, like we get the community involved, we get everyone involved, especially kids, and you know, community participation is a, is a big deal for us. So, in phase one, we surveyed three townward, town-owned parcels, Blatnik Park, Community Center Forest, that's the one next to the town pool, and Stanford Park. So, we had key, two key recommendations from phase one, developing a hiking trail to the Community Center Forest. Happy to report that that's almost done, and uh, taking good steps to protect the biodiversity in Blatnik Park. Few people pay attention to this, but Blatnik Park is a biodiversity hotspot. There's like lots of endangered species birds, including the meadowlark and the bobolink, and it's such a beautiful space and a town, really a treasure to our town. Uh, phase two recently completed. I love that picture. The, the, you know, this is from the spring twenty-twenty-four nature walk. Uh, we did get uh, permission from the parents of the kids before using that photograph. So, the phase two was much bigger in scope. We had uh, we had ten parcels that we surveyed. Uh, we had one nature walk in spring, uh, summer and fall. All of these were um, done by a trained ecologist. There are some key, key improvements, key recommendations, that is improvement to several town-owned parks. There are town parks that are kinda hidden right now, not ac, easily accessible. Fieldstone Estates is a good example, so the phase-two recommendations include improvements to town-owned parks, getting people involved in nature, and target appropriate land acquisitions with appropriate fundraising, which is also a comprehensive plan recommendation. So, this is the last slide. One key takeaway, as the town approaches what we call full build, um, preservation of existing green space is very important, and it's a top priority for our residents as well, as indicated in the, in that last graphic, which is the um, word cloud from the Comprehensive Plan Survey. Thank you very much for your attention, and I'd like to thank Laura, my, and my CAC colleagues, for all the help they have given in this project.
Thank you very much, Ashok. All right. I think I, I'm gonna make a change tonight. I might make this a permanent change, but I'm finding that um, to answer some questions preemptively, it might be helpful for us to have our committee reports and our remarks um, before public comment. So, I'm gonna move on to police and public safety or committee reports. Okay. Keep me on my toes. Police and Public Safety Committee, can you hear me? Like this is... Police and Public Safety met on March sixth. Under Operations, Chief Koshen thanked Troop G for their support on um, our, our efforts on Route Seven. Chief gave an update that um, or just some information that crashes have decreased dramatically since two thousand eighteen, but the severity of the crashes on Route Seven have increased. Chief met with the Department of Transportation, and he requested that instead of having Route Seven have parts of it that are forty miles an hour and parts of it that are forty-five miles an hour, that the whole strip of it be forty miles an hour, so people don't have to like keep track of accelerating and decelerating. He also talked about billboard signs to help slow traffic, and that our new license plate readers will help us find dangerous drivers that get reported to the police station. We also discussed our town supporting our public sa, the public safety message signing from um, Assembly Smolins Initiative. We also discussed, under Operations, a traffic engineer named Tom Malander. Tom worked for decades for Scotia and Glenville, and he worked for the Department of Transportation evaluating roadways. Um, he's got experience running reports and doing analysis support down even to weather patterns with traffic. He's an independent contractor, and he has offered to assist us and not bill us, so thank you to Mr. Malander for that assistance. Under Fleet and Equipment, we have a surplus of firearms, and we're be, we'll be transitioning to Newark Locks, and that is a budgeted item. Under Training, Officer Thomasone and Officer Robinson attended instructor development course, and that was the third through the fourteenth, and now they can be trainers for our department. Sergeant Gafaga will be attending supervisor school at Zone Five Academy. That's a mandatory training, and that's on the twenty-fourth through April eleventh. And Chris Henry is lead, has led the, the, sorry, the Departmental Defensive Tactics Training, March fourteenth through fifteenth. We also had on the eighteenth Detective Munger and Officer Camonzo attended the county joint crash um, training. Lot of trainings this month again. So, for citizen correspondence, ongoing, we had Michael Klett, a resident, who came to our meeting, and he requested continued work on Council Road, and um, he also spoke about road rage incidents in his neighborhood, and he was encouraged to call nine-one-one immediately, um, if there's ever a road rage incident. Under New, um, we spoke about Joe Gayle, started a petition for community action, asking the county and state to support for Route Seven, um, to support more efforts to slow traffic and further draw attention. This is a citizen-led petition, and we're encouraging people to sign that petition. Under Town Events, we have Coffee with a Cop at the Senior Center, the third Tuesday every month. We have the Cops and Kids Reading Program, and Hillside was the host school for March, and um, Rec Department reported out that April twelfth will be a Blatnik Park um, paint recycling event from eight to twelve. That's a Saturday. For Court and Town Attorney, we have seen a continued overall increase in our extreme risk protection order cases. For the Fire Department, Chief Venna came and spoke with us. Um, we had a discussion about how to help educate the public about pedestrian and bicycle safety. Uh, there's a yearly targeted Governor's Traffic Safety Commission um, campaign, so we discussed how to support and partner with the Fire Department on that effort. And for resolution tonight, we have two resolutions. One is for that surplus of the firearms to trade in for credit, and that's also budgeted for, to purchase the new ones. And we also have uh, a change to the town's peddler and solicitors code. We had a public hearing on February twenty-fifth about that. The biggest takeaway, I think, for the residents with this uh, change is that residents who wish to prohibit door-to-door solicitation can register with the town. There'll be a form to fill out online or in person, and also residents can display a sign at their doorway that says something like, "No soliciting," um, something of that manner, and then people are not allowed to come to your home and solicit there. And our next meeting is scheduled for April third at three-thirty. Great. Thank you. We'll move on to Highway and Community Programs.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Highway Parks Recreation Committee, we met on March sixth. Ray Smith, who handles our Highway Department, reports first. Personnel-wise, we've got one resolution for this evening for some seasonal hires in the Parks Department and the Highway Department. We discussed the areas that the Highway and Parks crews are working, trimming bushes along the bike path recently. If anybody's been over that way, you can see we do a lot of trimming and a lot of work during the winter months in those areas. That's less impactful on the foliage, and then when things come out in the spring, you barely notice that we did any sorts of trimming. We discussed bid extensions for the twenty-twenty-five milling and paving in the town. I'm happy to report that our bids were extended for another year. We also discussed uh, Dean Street Park and the mowing at Dean Street Park, yard waste pickup, uh, flyers for yard waste pickup, and the yard waste pickup information is gonna be on the town website. Starts in April, weather permitting, at random pickups, and we've built in a little more flexibility into the yard waste pickup for our highway departments, hopefully reduced our cost in picking up of the yard waste. Also, at the meeting, we discussed sidewalks on Union Street, um, and discussed with our town attorney the ownership of those wa, sidewalks, the maintenance of those, and that's an ongoing discussion in that area. Also, we discussed some drainage issues on uh, Alva Drive in the town and Balltown Road, and then we discussed some new developments on Pierce Road and possible drainage problems or possible issues with those areas. And Ray also reports on obviously plowing and salting. We're not done with winter yet, so please remember no parking on the streets. Hopefully, we won't get any more snow, but this is upstate New York, so please be ready for that. Next, we move on to community programs. Um, that is Lori Paredes and Jean Fode reported at the meeting on our summer programs, camps, classes, and we discussed possible full-day camps. Our community programs department is looking into that to see about staffing and the possibility of doing some all-day programs. Uh, the Spring Bunny Parade is here at Town Hall on April eighteenth. So, there's your first notice. Also, you can check the website for that. We discussed also possibly of having some other type of functions here at the town. Our Thursday night concerts are fully booked for the summer. That's probably one of the best deals around. Um, our community out here at our gazebo, we have concerts on Thursday nights. It's one hours. It, it's free, and it's, it's really fantastic entertainment. Next at our meeting, we get a program for, from our senior programs. That's down at our rec center. We have a lot, they have a lot going on down there with exercise programs. We have a blood drive that's gonna be April fourteenth. That Councilmember Moskowitz spearheads for us every year. Thank you for handling that, and that is on April fourteenth. And I also, I have some visuals for you this evening. We have some, a group down there. It's a sewing group. Now, these people do sewing, knitting, they make these blankets. These blankets get donated to veterans group, hospice groups, all the material for these items, hats, all donated. Also, the sewing group down there at our rec center makes these outfits for children. They make these little skirts, shorts, and pants. This is all donated, free material. They've brought the machines. We set them up down there at the rec center. These little t-shirts, they don't make these. These you can donate, or they get donations of these little t-shirts to go with these outfits, and they get donated to Things of My Very Own City Mission, Street Soldiers, and Works of Mercy. So, these are just some things that are going on in our town, at our senior center, all donated. This is all donated material, donated, donated time by town residents and volunteers down there, so exceptional, exceptional work, and we wanna thank them so much for everything that they do for the, for the community. And our next meeting is April third at eight AM here at Town Hall.
Why, great. Thank you so much.
The visuals?
Yeah, that was great. How exciting.
I need visuals.
We'll move on to water sewer and engineering. Do you have visuals?
Uh, I do, but they're not nearly as nice or as interesting.
Not as visual.
The Water, Sewer, and Engineering Committee met earlier this month on March sixth, uh, and one of the topics we discussed was the River Road Water Main Replacement Project. Uh, this is a one-mile, twelve-inch main that runs along River Road, uh, from the GE Circle down to Blatnik Park, and the reason we're discussing replacing it is because of its aging infrastructure, the number of breaks that occur annually along that stretch. I believe sometimes it's five or, or six a year, um, as well as the fact that that main services our large industrial complexes, uh, GE and, and Capel, for example. Uh, so we've been working with CT Mail to design, um, what that replacement will look like. We do have an estimated cost, um, which is around one-point-five million. Part of that is budgeted for. Um, there are some capital funds available for that project, and we will also be looking at funding sources, uh, once the design is complete. Um, this isn't something that's gonna happen, you know, immediately. Obviously, it's gonna take time to look for funding sources, um, but it is something we are beginning to look into. Relative to the utility billing, um, and water and sewer rate study that we're currently undergoing with Raftellus, uh, Superintendent of Water and Sewer Matt Yedo provided an update on the data, uh, that we continue to submit to Raftellus as they request it. Uh, Raftellus has started to analyze that data and um, analyze the uh, initial information that we've sent them, and they have reached out for some clarification on some of the numbers, so our Comptroller's Office has been working with them, uh, to make sure all of the information is clear, so they can begin their study. Down at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, regarding our organic waste program, we are continuing to receive two trucks of whey per day from Chavani. That is in addition to the septic collars that we've been working with for quite a while now, and as a result, our gas production is uh, increasing there, which of course is a, a, our goal and our intent as we work to make that facility a net-zero facility. Uh, the MS Four Report, which is an annual report, the Municipal Separate Storm Water System Report, uh, is back and is available for public comment. There's a hard copy of that report out in the rotunda, and also a copy on the website for anybody who wants to review it and comment. Uh, and of course, that is something that's required by the state to protect our wa, water quality throughout the town. Uh, the last thing I wanted to mention is just, excuse me, just a reminder regarding the Transfer Center. Uh, the Transfer Center, uh, closing date has been extended, this, extended this year to April twelfth. That will be the last day that the transfer station will be open. And as I said, my visuals are not nearly as nice as Councilmember McPartland's, um, but I would encourage everyone who has questions. I, I know there's a lot of questions, um, and concern around the transfer station, uh, or Transfer Center closing. Uh, so on the website, if you click on Departments and then Recycling and Transfer Station... there are some visuals, graphs, that show the declining rate of users over the last several years, as well as the consistent deficit for the last six or so years. There's also some information on there as to what we considered when discussing the closure of the transfer station, as well as alternatives that our residents can use. And our next meeting will be next Thursday, April 3rd, 4:30 p.m. at, in the Schaefer Room.
Great. Thank you. All right, Economic Development, Historic Preservation, and Environmental Conservation.
Thank you, Supervisor. We met on March 7th here in Town Hall and, of course, went through and are moving forward with the linkage study and the public outreach on Route 7. Also, we discussed a ton of money coming into Niskiuna through GE, Renova, about $96 million. Just astronomical, the economic growth and development that's been going on here in the town of Niskiuna. The city of Skynectity has been, has received a ton of money through GE there and the surrounding municipalities. That's really been a great boost to our area. But the big news is, of course, we have Arbor Fest coming up. It's usually Arbor Day, but on April 26th, it is going to be Arbor Fest. So instead of just giving out hundreds of trees like we normally do, we'll also have several booths set up. I believe we're going to have live music, so that should be good. And a lot of other giveaways and town activities going on here at Town Hall. So that will be on April 26th. Continue to check out the website for updates. And we hope to see you all at our next meeting, first Friday of every month. Thank you.
Right. Thank you so much. All right. I just have some brief comments. I'm going to start off by addressing the event on March 9th at the Town Hall Gazebo. I don't want to be misquoted or misunderstood, so I am going to read directly off of what I wrote. And I'm, I'm, I'm not really sure how an alternate narrative got started here and how misinformation emerged, but I can say with 100% certainty, there's no conspiracy going on here. Not sure how all of that started, so I thought it might be helpful for me to go through the actual facts leading up to and then after that event. So we'll start with Mr. Dickerson, who made a speech that went viral at a Tonko event. He plans a rally at Town Hall Gazebo that he describes as a teach-in. He posts this event on his social media page. At some point prior to the event, Mr. Dickerson was placed on administrative leave from his teaching position at Niskiuna High School. The Niskiuna Democratic Committee, having seen his comments at the Tonko event, sends an email and invites committee members to attend if they desire. Dickerson reaches out to a town employee via text to ask about using the space. The employee tells him that he is, quote, "good to go" because the space is open to the public. We are working internally through the concern that this town employee, who texted with Mr. Dickerson, incorrectly stated that she heard from the town attorney when she had not in fact spoken with the town attorney. However, that piece of information doesn't change the central message, which is to tell Mr. Dickerson that the space is public. Mr. Dickerson makes statements at this event that were recorded. A clipped version of the recording, appearing to show Dickerson making comments about touching without consent, is shared around high school students' social media. Wednesday, March 12th, a parent contacts Town Hall and alerts the Supervisor's Office of statements made by Dickerson at the event. A version of the edited video is obtained by the town and forwarded to law enforcement. Law enforcement initiates an investigation, and the town makes a statement to alert residents that the comments are being investigated and to clarify that there is no rental, approval, or booking process for the front lawn of Town Hall. Some additional points of fact here. I am not a member of the Executive Committee of the Niskiuna Democratic Committee, nor do I control or send emails for the Democratic Committee. I do not know Mr. Dickerson outside of watching this video, and I was not aware of this event until well after it took place. I was out in South America when this event was planned, when the newspaper published Mr. Dickerson's letter, and when the event was held. I had zero contact with anyone regarding the event until I returned home. All fact-based, so I'm hoping that clears up anybody's concern that there was some other thing happening in the background. So I'm going to move on to actual town business. I want to reiterate, you know, the notices went out to transfer station permit holders. We sent out a letter going over the fact that we would be honoring the annual notice, the annual permits that usually expire on March 31st are going to be honored until April 12th. It just gives a little extra time to get, to get through your punch cards, but we won't be selling any annual passes past March 31st. That is the end of the fiscal year for the transfer station. I also included an infographic. I tried to include every piece of criteria that was used by all of us to make a decision to close a transfer station. I couldn't actually fit all of the criteria on one infographic. So if you'd like some additional context, I'm happy to have a conversation about it. I am well aware that this is not a popular decision for a lot of people, but I feel very strongly that it is the best fiscal decision for this town. We've also identified several places that can serve as replacements for transfer stations. And if you haven't been to the Hetchell Town Road County Recycling Facility, it's phenomenal. And they have a lot of opportunity, maybe even more than opportunities, to, to recycle things than we did at the Niskiuna Transfer Station. So there's a lot of opportunities out there to replace the experience that's going on there. We've also talked with Gary, who works at the transfer station, about his interest in potentially going over to the Senior Center and maybe having, so if you really had a great time hanging out with Gary, we're hoping he sticks around and he'll come and help us out at the Senior Center. And maybe we could formalize that whole chit-chat into some kind of coffee, weekly coffee event or something. Not the same as transfer station, but maybe warmer and coffee included. I've been going through a whole lot of different projects. I, I want to touch on the River Road project. I'm in active conversations, hopefully still active, trying to get some state funding to help us with that one and a half million-dollar project, particularly because it butts up against some industrial property that have very big commercial owners. So we're hoping that that will help us, help put us in a position where we can have, you know, some supplemental funds to help us replace that water main and hopefully eventually the sewer line that's there as well. Some of those industrial pieces of property, I've had a lot of contact with them that I hadn't had beforehand. I got a chance to go and take a tour of Momentive, and I never went down that driveway, even when it was Skynectity, you know, SI, and it's a really cool facility. They're going to be doing some work on it potentially, but they just kind of wanted to show what the campus looked like and the background of it. They have a really cool history. They've got a relationship with MYSI. It's a really cool organization, and I thank, thank them for inviting me to come and tour it. We've also been working with GE, big projects going on there. They've been wonderful to work with as well. So I want to thank them and hope that we'll have their support for getting some state funding for River Road. The other thing we've been working on, just some smaller-end projects, is just cleaning up some of the grants. We've had some grants that we have, like a little bit of money left in over the years. And so, as I said in the last meeting, my focus is to try to tie up a lot of those projects. A lot of them are connected to parks projects that, you know, I'm sure that you've noticed that we've done a lot of bigger and some smaller over the years. So we're going to button that up, make sure that we're using the dollars as best that we can. Ray's been great in getting some quotes so we can figure out what we have and what we're able to do this summer. The other thing that we're looking at is taking some grant monies that have been left over for building safety and upgrading the security cameras in here, potentially looking at some access control as well, if it makes sense to, and if the money's available in the funds that we already have. And lastly, I'm going through a, I would imagine, probably three, four, maybe six-month process of looking through all of our departments and evaluating various things about them. I'm, I'm looking at roles and I'm looking at duties, and I want to understand what the distribution of labor looks like in here. We've had a lot of new hires. Some of them maybe are taking over all of those roles, maybe they're not. But I want to make sure that we are maximizing our human capital and that we're finding opportunities for efficiencies wherever we can and making sure that any technology investments that we make moving forward are helping us to maximize human capital and to make sure that our processes are running smoothly. I don't imagine that this is a quick process. There's a lot of siloing that has occurred over the years that we're trying to break down, but the department heads have been wonderful about providing information. It's ongoing, and I hope to give you some updates sometime soon. So with that, I'm going to open Privilege of the Floor, and any residents that signed up will go first. I ask you to be respectful of the policy to limit your comments to three minutes. If you have something additional that you didn't get a chance to say that you want to share, you can share those comments with Supervisor@niskiuna.org. And that goes for questions. If you'd like a response on a question, we don't do a question and ask here. So if you need a reply, absolutely reach out, and I'd be happy to provide it. So we'll start with whoever's on the list.
I have Leslie Gold.
A little short of a name, huh? Leslie Gold of Niskiuna. I am going to address the Recycling and Transfer Station, which is its proper name. I've been using the station for 37 years, and I am decidedly unhappy to see it being closed. I will note, Madam Supervisor, that you came in for like the last scene of a three-act play. You don't know what's been going on all these years. I remember when Paul Sebastian, before he retired, tried to close it because, gee, the town doesn't need to provide that service. Well, if that's the only basis for making decisions, you got a whole bunch of problems to get rid of. So I hope you don't take that strategy. But I will say, I wound up using Recycling Transfer Station, not really to save money, although I did, but I was disgusted with the carrier I wound up with. I had hired a carrier. They were wonderful. Had them for almost a year, never a problem of any sort. And then they sent me a letter that, henceforward, this other company would be picking up my waste because they only, and I called to find out why, the company I had engaged only had two houses on my street, and this other company had a bunch, and they had the reverse situation on another street, so they traded streets. The new company was horrible. They started in the fall. By January, I knew I had to get away from them because I was really tired of coming home in snowstorms and even a blizzard and having to go hunting through my neighborhood to find my trash can in its cover. And once I, and being my father's daughter, I did the logical thing and went to the transfer station. And I found it was very satisfying, especially as the town added more and more recycling opportunities. There's a huge precept of Ticonolum, preparing the world. We humans are not good for this planet. We don't treat it with enough respect. And one of our signs of disrespect is how we willingly throw things out, and not necessarily in proper containers. To go to the Recycling and Transfer Station and be able to put stuff in bins where it would be moved on and eventually wind up actually being recycled, assuming it wasn't contaminated, was a good thing. So I'm very disappointed that it's closing. I will tell you, I know there have been, over the years, at least two people who took part in trying to kill it, and one of them was finally successful. And I, I think that's very regrettable. The alternatives I've seen aren't the same. They're not as good. Partly because, in some cases, you have to go quite a distance. The Latham one, they changed their entrance. You have to go almost in, to me, it looks like a mile wet out of your way to get into what you used to be able to approach right from Route 9. So regardless, I'm disappointed with all that. I do like the idea of engaging Gary to work with the seniors. I think he's a natural for it. He is respectful to everyone. But I am truly disappointed in the town, and I think it's taking a huge step back by closing it.
Thank you, Leslie. Do you have anyone else on the list?
Yes, we have Kevin Walsh.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Kevin Walsh, 2843 Whitmire Drive. Going to speak about a subject that's nothing new, and anything I say tonight most of you have heard before, either through committee meetings or communications with the current or prior supervisor. And that's the tractor-trailers hauling Chobani Way coming down Whitmire Drive, a road that feels inadequate for these-sized vehicles. But tonight, I want to focus on one just aspect to that, and that's the ingress and egress to Whitmire Drive. Some of these trailers, and I can't say all because I don't see them all, but I do see quite a few because of my location, are not obeying traffic control devices. When they exit or enter Whitmire Drive from River Road, they are coming from the east. I've brought this up before. If you look at the signage at the end of Whitmire Drive, there's no left turn, no six, no vehicles greater than six tons, which is 12,000 pounds. So these vehicles coming in can weigh up to 80,000 pounds, and they're coming from the east across. That means they're coming over Rosendale Road, past our schools. So it doesn't affect me, but it affects other residents within the community. And I have witnessed them leaving the site and hanging a left, looking straight at that sign. So these are the type of people that we're doing business with there. They can't obey a traffic control device. Now, even empty, if you Google the weight of these trailers, even empty, the low side, lowest number I could come up was 20,000 pounds, and it's a 12,000-pound limit. So, you know, so I just want to bring that to attention. I have brought this to the attention of other folks before, so I'm not happy with that. Related to that, it's about just communications. I'm here tonight to be able to be on the record talking about this. I have talked about these items at the Water, Sewer, and Engineering Meeting and have asked for those to be into the minutes so that, you know, I can ensure that my comments or anything that I hand out, like my mitigation strategies, be actually incorporated in the minutes as requested. But I'll never know because minutes aren't posted. Town isn't following its own policy regarding the operation of committees. If you take a look at the committees, I believe there's five, most of the committees have been posting their minutes, and agendas are pretty good. Minutes, mostly committees for 2024 are pretty good. I know we're early into 2025, so it takes time, and that's obvious by tonight how many minutes we approve from 2024 at the Town Board. But the committees aren't, the committee, at least the Water, Sewer, and Engineering, is not posting the minutes as, as the town policy that you all adopted says. In fact, it was revised in January of 2025, 2025 Resolution 2025-17. So it was updated. So I'm just asking that, you know, as part of communication and transparency, you follow the policies that you all agreed to. I think that would be a big help. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks so much, Kevin. Okay, we don't have anyone left on the list, so if you'd like to comment, you can come on up.
Hi, I'm Ruth Ankapsha. I live on Morrow Avenue in Niskiuna. I happen to be the mother that the parent that called on Wednesday wanting to find out how the approval got into existence of my, I have twin boys that go to the high school. They both had a video they brought home. Their parents were calling me. I guess I'm the person that everybody talks to because I complain the most. So I understand, Erin, you were out of town when I called. The, your secretary told me explicitly that the town knew, the town was, there were people in this building that were speaking about this gentleman coming here. She told me it was approved by the town and that she would get back with me and let me know who had approved it. Never got that phone call back. Did see your, your, whatever you want to call it, your little write-up thing saying, "I wasn't here. I don't know anything about this." I get that. I understand. You didn't know anything. You weren't here. I get that. But the problem is, if you're not here, how do you write a statement about what transpired while you're not here? I have done a lot of research on, and my understanding is you guys I have done a lot of research on, and my understanding is you guys record telephone calls that we have here. If you don't do that anymore, fine, but if you can find my phone call, you'll see that your secretary told me explicitly that it was talked about with several people here in this building. It was approved by somebody in this building. I don't know who it was, I don't know what's going on, but I have people that I love in this community. I have people on this board that I love that I would do anything for. I feel betrayed, I feel lied to, I feel hurt because you didn't do the right thing. You know, you, either your secretary lied to me, or what you wrote is not the truth. One of the two happened, and if we could figure out which one of the two, because I don't care what party line you're on, when you step over the line and you, you flat out lie to somebody, I have a problem with that. And I don't care what you want to do or you don't want to do, but I don't want to be lied to by anyone, and I was lied to, and I don't appreciate it.
Thank you, Ruth.
Hi. My name is Bill Chapman. I'm at 1465 Clifton Park Road. I have heard Councilman Delarado often say citizens should get involved with what's going on in the town. And I do appreciate the volunteers that are on the, on the tree council that, that came tonight, and always appreciate a local business like Price Chopper putting down some roots in the community. And I did want to say, as someone who's served on some voluntary committees in the town, I, I think Ashok Ramasubramanian has earned a little bit of a thank you, and as one citizen to another, I'd like to pass that along. Because I, along with Leslie and Kevin, served on the 2003 Comp Plan Committee for the town. There was a lot of meetings, a lot of work, and a lot of looking at things, and Ashok serves on our current Comp Plan Committee. And he also is on our Conservation Advisory Council, a lot of work, and also on the Natural Resources Inventory. And he, not only did he invite some kids, but he invited the members of the Complete Streets Committee to go with him when we were out, when he was taking tours, and we went up to the town hall, and we went to the park over, Stanford Park, and the one on Consul Road, and spent the day doing that. And I make no bones, I'm a committee person with one of the parties in the town, Ashok, you know, would like to do some more leadership. But I think his work on the Natural Resources Inventory is also credit worthy too, that, you know, he's helped write the grants, organized kids, done the tours, and I actually think that the town has, has a lot of green space and that the results of what we learn from there is, you know, to go ahead to do things, and I think the town's made the effort to preserve green space and open space in the community. And I know on Complete Streets that we're pushing walking and multi-use paths, and do emphasize the point that being out in nature and even walking to school is good for young people in our community. And so I do want to say thank you to those folks, and, you know, as one citizen to another, with some appreciation of how much energy it takes to do some of these committees, I'd like to thank Ashok for his work on the Natural Resources Inventory that he presented this evening, so, thank you.
Great, thank you, Bill. Anybody else like to speak?
Hello, my name is Mike Klett. I live at 3554 Consul Road. Seven years ago, I came to this town board and told them that you have a speeding problem in Niskiuna. I was told, not too bad. Since then, there's been seven deaths in Niskiuna that could have been not happened. Once again, I'm here to ask that please do something about this excessive speeding on Consul Road between 3450 Consul Road and Buckingham Consul Road. This makes the seventh month I have come to this town board and asked for you people to do something about it. And I ask that you send it to me in writing. And if I'm not mistaken, I think you just said all you have to do is come to the supervisor and you will do something about it. This makes seven months. I'm bringing up another paper when I'm done, that I've come to you and asked you to do something about it and get me in writing what you have done. You've done nothing that, I've asked speed bumps, red lights, stop signs, anything to try to slow the traffic down. None of you up there have done anything. And you're running for election, why should I vote for you people? You don't do what people ask. I don't know why you need 3,000 people to tell you there's a problem when you know in your hearts that there is a problem. And the only problem that exists is the one you don't recognize. Thank you.
You can... Hey, would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. How you doing? Hanny Santana, Trottingham Drive. I wanted to touch on something that was said at the last meeting last month. That was Natalie. She talked about how people that are on the board do not recruit, recuse themselves on certain issues that they may have some influence or some connection to. I think that's something that you all really should pay attention to and be upfront. If you have a relationship with someone or someone or a group, you should say it, and you should recuse yourself from a vote. Now with that being said, I want to touch on what Linda said concerning the pension in those four employees. When I go back and look at the different Facebook posts, specifically Jason's, he mentioned that he wanted to right a wrong. I want to know, what is the wrong? Who wronged those employees? And second, what is his expertise in this that two court cases did not find something was wrong, that they were wrong? Because it's very interesting that somehow the past supervisor writes a letter stating that they were not at fault. And then they went to the legislature, they got it approved, and they got, and Niskiuna residents paid close to $750,000. So we'd like to know, what was the wrong that was righted? How could a Supreme Court judge and, and, and the appellate judge get it wrong and all of you can get it right? See, that's what I don't understand. Where is the expertise that you are showing and saying you have by righting the wrong? Now, another thing that was interesting was that I wanted to ask Jason, how did he get his court job? The reason being, he said to the press that he got his job in June of '23. But he didn't take the test for that job until October, when it was posted, October 11th through Wednesday, November 1st. That's interesting how a registered Republican can get a job in a Democratic court county before even taking the test. So if someone would tell me, Jason, how'd you do it? Because I'm sure a lot of other people would like to know. But in addition to that, we foiled his test scores. He was not even in the top three, the top 10, the top 100, or top 200, or top 300. His rank was 456, 456. So you're telling me that 455 people ahead of him turned down the job? How does that happen? That's what I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? All right, if we're all set, oh.
Good evening, Linda Rizzo, 2229 Fairlawn Parkway. I want to go over or say something about the press release, Erin, that was on the website regarding that rally, where it did state about the parent who aptly explained that she was lied to. So I'm not going to go over that because we only have a three-minute limit, but also that the town did not support it or approve it. Now you said that the person who said they spoke to Alana, but that never happened. Reading directly from the text that came from the town under the heading "Niskiuna Administrator", it might have to be approved by Alana, but could you either give me the flyer or whatever you guys are doing? Because I'm going to try to help you with this. That sounds like support. Then it says, the employee says, under the heading "Niskiuna Administrator", okay, just heard from Alana, who is the town's attorney, you guys are all set, that is right to free speech, right to public assembly, you're all set and ready to go for tomorrow. And if I do have a chance, I will stop by because I'd love to see some of it all. Sounds really good. Well, I guess it did turn out to be really good. Now I want to know, this employee in a text said she heard from the attorney is making this all up? That's shocking. According to you, she never spoke to the attorney, and yet this comes under Niskiuna Administrator. Not to mention the parent was lied to when she called. Now I know you were out of town. I'm going to say this, when you're an administrator, and I've been in administrative positions, actually with bigger staff than you have, like 300. I've been in Europe, Fiji, New Zealand, Europe, I got business calls, texts, emergency messages if something was going on in the organization, and I had to respond. Because when you're in an administrator, you're 24/7. That's a fact. So I'm very puzzled. I'm also puzzled why, with all this going on, no one on the board has asked these questions. But I can actually tell you why. You all agree with each other. Actually, I will have to admit, we have five Democrats sitting on this board. Because we have no checks and balances with Jason Moskowitz, zero. He just says yes to everything, except on a few issues. And the last thing I want to know is, why haven't you sent out another press release, at least saying this was an error? Your first press release. Because if it was an error, you should be in shock. But obviously, you didn't do that. So if you're not surprised or upset that all this went out in your name, then it must be something else. Because any administrator would have apologized to the public. And I know you look bored, Erin, but I'm reading from texts from town hall. And are this, is this per employee now going to be thrown under the bus to cover up mistakes made? I certainly hope not. Thank you.
Erin, that was really, really rude. We're used to that, Ruth, believe me. Mr. Jaikle.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joseph Jaikle, 914 Roman Ave. Wanted to thank Jessica for mentioning the petition that I started. As you know, I began that petition a couple of weeks ago. It's got over 1,100 signatures on it, and a high predominance of them are Niskiuna residents. Every signature on that petition counts. The issues with Route 7 have gone on far too long, and the reason why I started that petition was because I've listened to talk and talk and talk literally for years, and it's taking somebody to bring some action to the issue, and that's why I stepped up for that. Every signature is important. I'm delivering this petition to the governor. I haven't closed the petition yet. A lot of people in this room have signed the petition. I would like to see support from the members of this town board. Public safety, it's not a controversial issue. It's not something that's political, that's for Republicans or Democrats only, it's for everybody. And I haven't seen anybody on this board yet sign my petition. I'm not calling you out for that reason, but this is such an important issue to the town of Niskiuna, for the 23,000 people that live here and everybody else that drives on this road to get to where they're going. If you can't stand behind this and put your signature on this, it really, the absence of a signature speaks volumes just as much as that addition. So I want to see everybody's signature on this because I know public safety is important to you. So I hope that you do that. Because we need every signature we can to push this and make it happen. So I want to take the last minute that, that I have to speak and talk about FOIL. We just had the Sunshine Week, and obviously FOIL is about public disclosure of government documentation and meetings and records. I FOIL requested information from the town before. Some of it comes to me in a timely manner lately, not quite so much. And I'd like to see, you know, the town follow the procedures in terms of being timely, being accurate, being forthcoming with information. And in regard to that, with this conversation that happened about the March 9th rally, you're probably aware, I FOIL requested a significant amount of information from the town. I'm looking for the town correspondence, which includes electronic correspondence as well. I know that from the newspaper story that the Democratic Committee sent out an email, it was a blast, it went to Democrat committee members. Again, I look in front of me, and there's five people sitting in front of me, they're all Democrat committee members. There was definitely awareness throughout the Democrat Committee of this rally that was going on, and that email went out before the rally took place. I'm looking for the information, I don't want to be stonewalled on it, I don't want to have to wait a full 30 days to get it. I know information is readily available, and for the fact that we need public disclosure on this, I'm asking the town to make sure that you generate this information and get it back to me so that we can have a full understanding of what occurred, what may not have occurred, and that we've got answers to the questions that are being raised. I appreciate that, and thank you very much, everyone.
Joe, there's just a bunch of dinos and rhinos up here.
I'm not saying that. I'm looking, I'm looking for honesty with the town board members. That's really what it's about. It doesn't matter to me about who's a rhino or not, I don't care about that. I don't really care if you got a deer or an R next to your name, I just want honest answers and the truth. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Supenny, Regent Street. I wasn't planning to speak, but I do have to say something about this March 9th incident. I'm very disappointed to hear the negative comments toward the town about this whole incident. I do not put any blame on the town for that incident. It is a public space, it is free for anyone to use. If your secretary, in fact, did reach out to the lawyer just to think that maybe I ought to do that, the lawyer didn't say the town approves. The lawyer, as I understand it, and if the lawyer knows what she's doing, said it's a public space, it's free speech. You had no idea what was going on or what was going to go on, and that's the same with any kind of public space. So I fully support all of you on that March 9th incident. I don't put any blame on you. You followed through after you realized that it was a controversial kind of activity. You followed through after the fact, and I just want to say thank you very much for your patience with these individuals who are exaggerating. your patience with these individuals who are exaggerating and stretching out the facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay. With that, we'll close privilege of the floor. We'll move on to resolutions. Okay, we're going to start with 2025-77, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin.
A resolution hiring seasonal laborers in the town's parks and highway department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Motion passes on to 2025-78, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into an easement agreement with the owners of 1950 Union Street.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Motion passes on to 2025-79, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin.
A resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of fertilizers, fertilizer, seeds, mulch, and spreading services.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Yeah, we need to make just some minor changes here. There's some rounding errors and some stuffs that's been brought to our attention on this. So I don't know. I have this here for the clerk. First line for soccer par, 2632 Zener, it's actually 16.5 acres. Underneath that, the two acres is 2.25. As we go down a little further on this sheet, we've got the soccer park at 16.5, Town Hall at 2.25. And then on that same page, the soccer park again at 16.5. And just for everybody's knowledge, there's some, people are examining this and looking at the math, you know, if something is a quarter bag short, it gets rounded up to a full bag. So there's some of that in this also. So that would be my amendment for this resolution. I can give these changes to the clerk. They're very minor, but I just want to bring them to everyone's attention.
Might do a motion to amend?
Is it just typographical?
It could be considered typographical, mathematical, I'm not sure.
Do we get to the same?
We do get to the same number of bags, yep. Same number of bags.
Just the typographical.
Same number of bags, same dollars.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes on to 2025-80, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rata.
A resolution appointing an individual to the town's Historic Preservation Committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes on to 2025-81, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin.
A resolution awarding contracts for materials and services used by the highway department and its paving operations for 2025.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The motion passes on to 2025-82, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin.
A resolution authorizing changes to the standard licensing agreement utilized with sports organizations.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Just, the amendment is adding a line in there so that we're held accountable to making sure that the sports clubs know if there's any impending changes to field fees, so that they know far in advance of them setting their own fees. It was just a minor change in the license agreement. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes on to 2025-83, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan, Councilmember McPartlin, and Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution authorizing the disposition of certain town-owned surplus equipment.
Thank you. Do I have a second? And any discussion? Just getting rid of a lot of stuff. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The motion passes on to 2025-84, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications and inter-fund transfers.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes on to 2025-85, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution approving the warrant for residential and commercial utility billing for the second half of 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The motion passes on to 2025-86, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rata.
A resolution proclaiming April 26, 2025, as Arbor Day in the town of Niskuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Talked a little bit about this already. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes on to 2025-87, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution appointing a network and systems technician.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions on this? I think we went over this the last time. We're very excited for Kevin to get started. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes on to 2025-88, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rata.
A resolution regarding the Harriet Tubman Underground Railroad, New York State Scenic Byway nomination and corridor management plan of adoption.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on this? There's actually a really great article in the newspaper recently. If anyone's interested, they could read through kind of the state byway that they're proposing. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Yes, there was a good history in the paper about it, and it kind of links up with the tow path and the pathway there, so it should be, it should be a good program.
Yeah.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan. Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The motion passes on to 2025-89, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution authorizing gas piping replacement at the town's wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes on to 2025-90, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution authorizing the replacement of a pump at the Water District Number Three Pump Station.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
On to 2025-91, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution enacting local law number three of the 10 of 2025 to amend Chapter 203 of the Code of the Town in Niskuna entitled Peddlers and Solicitors.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
I'd like to thank the supervisor and attorney Fennin and our...
Michelle Town Clerk.
Oh, my gosh.
That's okay.
Long time. But your work on this has been amazing. Some people reached out and really felt like this was a safety issue, and, you know, it was for them, and it could be. So you guys made the town safer that way and gave people some choices on how to secure their home, so thank you for that hard work.
Great. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes on to 2025-92, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
As an ex-vacuum cleaner salesman, I was a little bit hesitant on that last resolution.
I forgot about that, sorry. I was waiting for it. I'm sorry, 2092.
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into an agreement regarding the town's phone system.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Pretty excited about this. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Motion passes on to 2025-93.
A resolution appointing an individual to the Ethics Board.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
2025-94, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution authorizing the retention of counseling services to renew, review cable's charges.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? This is one of those contracts where if there's monies realized in the audit, that pays their fee, so it doesn't cost us anything. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes on to 2025-95, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the CSCEA bargaining unit regarding the additional, the addition of a network and systems technician title.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes, and that is all we have.
Supervisor, could I have a minute?
Absolutely.